Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Hornbuckle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilwoman Hart.
Here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Present.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Here.
Council President McDermott.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Just as an announcement when you're looking at your agenda packet for tonight's meeting, the item that is New Business Item 3 will be and has been removed from tonight's agenda. Thank you. We will now begin with our special announcements and presentations. We have a very exciting one tonight. It's going to be led by the members of the Disability Advocacy Committee and our Pro Tem, Melissa Sampe.
Good evening. I am going to invite both chiefs who are joining me and then members of the Disabilities Advocacy Committee to join me up here as well, and then Don Nicholson and let's see if there's anyone else. I think that's it. Oh, our community police officers, if you guys want to come up too. Just scan in the room. I'll wait for them to join. Come on over, Ray. So today is actually a labor of love. I'm very proud of the committee as they approached me in April to put together something that we would be able to use in the community for our public safety team to communicate with those that are nonverbal. So this is something that we started in April. I'd like to thank my mom, who is a special education parapro or was for like 25 years. I'd like to thank Ray. I'd like to thank Director Azay and also Gretchen Still, who's not here. And also, I really, really, really want to thank Don Nicholson. I'm going to turn this over to them, but this is something that was important to Don because we're doing this in honor of Edward Nicholson. And this is something I don't think that Edward had these challenges at all. He did, yes. But for those that are in the community, it's important because I just did a ride along, which I'll talk about later. And we, as I think a department, I want to say "we," but you as a department, you guys interface with many different individuals, dealing with mental health, dealing with behavioral health challenges. So I'm really excited that Don Nicholson's going to make this presentation of these nonverbal cards, which will be used in our police department and fire department. So I'm going to turn this over to them. But I just wanted to tee this up because this is very meaningful to me and I'm very proud of the committee and all the efforts that they put together for these cards.
Thank you, Melissa. You know, I go back with, I was with the Disabilities Concerns Committee back many, many years ago with Ray, and I've met Debbie as a parapro when Melissa was about seven years old. So we go back a long time with the autism community. When Melissa and Debbie came to me in April about doing these cards, a lot of people don't know that my son Edward, who was autistic, passed away last year. Matter of fact, it's coming up on the one-year anniversary of September 23rd. And Edward was verbal, but it was one of those things where autism is a different... It's not something you can put in a book. You can't say, "This is how that person understands things." And I'd be a little non-political, non-politically correct here. When he was in the hospital, the doctors and nurses would come in and ask him, "Hey Edward, did you have a bowel movement today?" And he'd say, "Yes." He always wanted to say, "Give them the right answer." He wanted to tell them exactly what they wanted to hear. It wasn't lying. It was just that was what he thought they wanted to hear. So I would come back and ask him. I says, "Hey Edward, do you know what a bowel movement is?" "Nope." I said, "Okay." I said, "So that's one of the things that we teach different people." We've started since Edward passed. We started a program called Team Edward, and we go around to hospitals and talk to doctors and nurses about how to speak autism as a second language. And so people understand everything. Ray's a great guy, and he's one of the guys that we can talk to, and he knows all the stories, right, Ray?
Right.
So when they came to me to do this, I thought, "This is just the perfect addition to what we're doing for Team Edward." And so what I've got here is a pack of these cards for the police and the fire department. We've laminated about 40 of them. I figured the ambulances, it'd probably be best to have them laminated, and the rest are all coated. If you guys don't have enough, you got my number. We've printed over 1,000 of these to get started. You're the first departments. Westland is the first place that's going to get these. We are going to be going around to other departments and talking to them, and if they have a need for them, they wish to have them, these are all free. These are not tax dollars. These are not any... This is all from a fund that we've set up for money from Edward's life insurance policy and some that we've had donations and wanted to put in. So we want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity. And you know, Edward's number-one people were police and fire. Well, second, Batman was number-one, but you know, he went for, police and fire was next. So we have my Batman ring as Edward's ring, and you know, I always make sure I had the Batman socks on and everything. But that was his favorite thing. So I'm going to pass these over to the chief. There's laminated some in there. There's about 100 of the non-laminated, but those are also coated, so they will still last even without being laminated for a long, long time. But at any point in time, you find that you're running low or you need more, or this isn't enough to even get started on, please give me a call. We'll deliver in the same day. They're already printed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Don. Is there anyone from the committee that would like to share? Okay.
The Chair, Ray here, and I really support this. I liked this idea when they came to their table here from Dubra, and we all talked about this. And I'm really big about people with different abilities. It's autistic, even people with disabilities, even in hospitals. And these doctors are not even trained how to talk to people. So to me, inclusion is for everybody. Thank you.
We're getting them trained.
We're getting them trained.
Perfect. Now I would pass it over if you guys have anything to say.
Thank you very much, Rob. This is going to be a great tool to use as we serve the public out there. We occasionally run this, and this is going to be great. If you want me to help us still reach out to other chiefs of the departments, we'd gladly do that at any time.
Happy. Thank you.
All right. So I just want to give a round of applause for the committee. All right. So I think that's it. I don't know if we want to do a group picture. Thank you.
All right. Well, really tremendous job from everybody on the Disability Advocacy Committee, from Don Nicholson, from Pro Tem Sampe, Gretchen Still as well. So thank you all for a really wonderful presentation and really bringing a wonderful idea forward that's going to make a big impact on the community. And thank you to police and fire and our community police as well. Thank you for that. We will now move on to questions or input from the public on the agenda. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your city council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing as there is no one else, is there a motion to move on the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So I am just making a motion to move Item G on the consent calendar to New Business.
There's a motion to move Item G on consent calendar, New Business. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hart. Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Yes.
Council President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Back to the original consent calendar as amended. Are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Oh, we need roll call because it's amended. Roll call, please. Excuse me.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem, excuse me, Council President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Council has approved the following item, excuse me, council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of regular meeting held August 19th, 2024. Minutes of study session held August 19th, 2024. Approval of bid for the purchase of two hard-mount washer extractors to wash fire department gear in-house at fire stations number three and four. Administration recommends universal laundry machinery. Total amount not to exceed $20,236 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for City Hall HVAC preventative maintenance and building repair services. Administration recommends split awarding this contract to Climate Technology Mechanical Systems and Miller Bolt, Inc., for a three-year period commencing immediately with the option of two additional one-year extension terms, and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Annual City Hall HVAC preventative maintenance cost shall not exceed $18,888. Approval of the laptop management subscription through CDWG subscription to become effective immediately and will be valid for a three-year period in the amount of $6,821. Approval of licensing subscription renewal with City Works relating to the city's workflow management application for the Department of Public Service Fire and Neighborhood Services. Subscription effective November 15th, 2024 and will be valid through November 14th, 2025. Amount $100,500. Approval of the Institute of Responsive Government Grant Award. Funds associated with this grant, which total $60,000, shall be used exclusively for the nonpartisan public purpose of planning and operationalizing secure, efficient, and accessible election administration in the city of Westland. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? It's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New Business Item Number One. Request for City Council to enter into a closed study session on September 9th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. to consider the purchase or lease of real property pursuant to MCL 15.268D.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. So any discussion from the maker?
No discussion.
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, okay. Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Bear with me for one second. All right. Item New Business 1A, formerly known as Consent Calendar. Item G. Approval of MDOT Contract Number 24-5331 for concrete sidewalk construction along the east side of Merriman Road from approximately 500 feet south of Ann Arbor Trail to Hawthorne Drive, along Hawthorne Drive from Merriman Road to Edward Heinz Drive, including earthwork, concrete curb ramps, hot-mix asphalt, shared-use paths, solar-powered flashing beacons, permanent signing and permanent markings, and all together with necessary related work. This project is partially funded by an MDOT federal grant with the city's obligation of $89,900.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I'd like to hear from the administration.
Yeah, I'm guessing you have a question for the administration, right? Okay. Through the administration, who wants to take this item? Son?
I do, through the Chair. The construction of this sidewalk project fills a gap, sidewalk gap along Merriman Road. It's also part of a bigger plan to fill sidewalk gaps throughout the city so we can make walkable areas throughout the city. This specific project is funded by federal grant through MDOT. The total cost of the project is $371,500. Our share is about 20% of the cost, so it's about $89,900. Just as mentioned in the agenda, this runs along Merriman Road from Ann Arbor Trail to Hawthorne Drive and then cuts along Hawthorne Drive from Merriman to Heinz Drive. Part of the project's safety plan is to place flashing beacon at the corner of Hawthorne Drive and Heinz Drive, where the sidewalk crosses Heinz to get into the trails. The main part of this project is, it's going to start construction this season. It's scheduled to be awarded by MDOT on September 6th, and then two weeks from there, we will start construction. The closure of Merriman Road at the bridge will not affect the construction of this project, and likewise, the construction of the project will not affect Merriman Road Bridge. They're totally independent. So we could do part of the project when the road is closed, and the other part will wait until the county places a new sanitary sewer on the east side of Merriman. But for all intents purposes, it's not related or connected to the closure of Merriman Road Bridge. Like we said, it's funded by MDOT. This is the fifth time we do a sidewalk gap project, and we plan to apply for those projects each year as long as we can get them. I'll be happy to answer any question.
Councilman, did you have any other questions?
No, at this time. I'm happy from what I've heard, so I'll recommend approval. I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there any other questions from the supporter? And then Pro Tem?
Thank you so much for that very thorough explanation. I looked at this and instantly thought, "Oh my goodness, this is right near Merriman Bridge, and will this affect the construction that's going on?" So it's good to know that it will not have any effect. Is this part of a larger project? So is this just a continuation after the bridge is done that we're going to be following down Merriman Road and expanding the sidewalk program? Or is this just on the side of Merriman?
Well, this project is specifically for that location.
Okay.
But we have a larger plan to look at sidewalk gaps throughout the city. And every weekend, we will apply for funds because those tend to be expensive projects, and not only to construct the slab itself, but drainage. And like you mentioned in the report, in the agenda, drainage is part of it, ADA ramps, et cetera. So we have a larger plan, and we execute on that plan like piece by piece.
Okay, thank you. So is this, this was started, the grant was started last year, right?
Right. We had an agreement in front of council last year.
Yeah.
To ask for approval to accept the grant. And once the grant was accepted, then we started design of the project. And now the agreement in front of you is to do the construction itself. But like I said, the project will be bid by MDOT, not city project. We will have oversight of the project, but it will be a contractor hired by MDOT because it's a federal grant.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I also would support this item as well, too, but it was just important to share the full details and background because this is, I think, a thorn in everyone's back. If this is going to slow Merriman Bridge down, I was going to say, "No, no, no," but it looks like it's not. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and we'll make sure, obviously, nothing would slow Merriman Bridge down.
Accept the counter. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Outside of, you know, delaying the bridge, most residents are concerned about the traffic. How is this going to affect the traffic and how long in that area because of this construction?
Right. This project itself will not affect traffic whatsoever. Like I said, part of the project will be built when the road is closed, which is fine. But even if the road is fully open, we can still do the work outside the traveled lanes. So it will not affect traffic.
Yeah, that was the only concern I had, and thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? Yes, Councilwoman Baumann.
Can you just, one of the questions that's come up on the Merriman Road one is the current Merriman Road. Is that because the city's not responding, the city's not doing the work? And I think I just heard you say that MDOT, and sorry, through the chair, again, through the station. MDOT is doing the work on this. Is that, did I hear that right, MDOT? And you're overseeing it. What does, what does that mean? Because a lot of questions have come up on whether or not the city oversees the current project with the delays and everything like that. I think, I think, you know, we just need to make, you know, similar to what my councilwoman was saying, I think, you know, it's a very touchy area. So what does that look like to oversee MDOT?
For sure. This specific, the Merriman Road project, the bridge project, is a county project on a county road. So technically, the city cannot, you know, speed up the project or slow it down in any way. But we participated actively in the meetings leading up to this project and throughout the construction of this project. The reason is because we want to make sure the city's interests are protected. And unfortunately, there were many, many utility conflicts that were not seen before they start construction of the project, constructing the project. A final piece was a sanitary sewer that really took about five or six months to resolve. But I can say with confidence that this project is on its way to be completed by the end of this year. They're done with all underground work. There's nothing that's going to slow them down, except weather, obviously. But the abutment walls are up, the footings are done, the wing walls are up, the beams are manufactured. So all they have to do is just put it together on top of the existing abutment walls. They've done also some additional work outside the bridge, like on the road itself. They paved the section from the South Bridge to Warren Intersection. So all of those additional work were completed last year and early this year. We're just waiting for completing the North Bridge, which is above Heinz, which above Rouge River. So we can say that, from what I can see from their meetings, that it's on its way to be completed by the end of this year.
Then for this, the new project, how, what does it look like to oversee MDOT? I guess that's, oh, yeah, for the new project, sorry.
Oh, for the new project, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the old project.
That was great, though. Thank you.
For the new project, it's a city-owned project, so it's not a county or MDOT. But because it's funded by MDOT, then MDOT has responsibility to bid that job and award the contract and have the contractor work for them. But we supervise the construction engineering part of the project. So we're the engineer for the project. Once they award the contract, then they turn it over to us, and we'll take care of the rest. That's how it works.
Say, any additional questions from the council? I do have one, Director Sob. So our confidence level is pretty high, then, that this project will be completed this year and the sidewalk will be open?
Yeah, from what I can tell, we meet with them every two weeks, and every time, they assure us that it's on its way. Plus, my observation is since they've done with utilities and everything underground, the rest should be easy, bearing any, you know, weather conditions or something of that nature.
Do we have a groundbreaking, so to speak, of when we plan on starting exactly? Like, just...
I'm sorry, you're talking about sidewalk project?
Right. Because, I mean, the county has strung us along on the bridge project forever, and it's like, as my colleague has said for two years, like, "I'll believe it when I see it."
Spring 2025.
And...
Yeah, so I'm sorry, we've confused them with two projects.
No, no, I know we are. I know. But on this project in particular, since they've given us the go-ahead to start on the project, do we have an ETA on when we're going to get started ultimately?
Yeah, the contract will be awarded September 6th. Then two weeks from there, I'll have reconstruction meeting. If you'd like to have any groundbreaking or some type of...
No, we don't need to have like a ceremony for it. I'm just saying, you know, given what the county's already doing over in the area that we've been long delayed on, so...
Yeah. We're good. If we start the project like by the end of September, I'd say two months from there, should, the project should be completed. I'd say two months from there, should, the project should be complete.
Great. Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item number two, approval of special land use for proposed self-storage warehouse located at 37001 Warren Road, south side of Warren Road, west of Central City Parkway. This is from David Frank and Sterling McGregor. This is planning department number 1686H. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations with the condition that track and trailer rentals are prohibited.
Is there support? There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Move.
Thank you, Council President. The subject parcel here is comprised of approximately 12 and a half acres. The petitioner proposes to transform the vacant 82,000-square-foot space that formerly housed the Value City Furniture into a self-storage warehouse. Self-storage warehouses are permitted in the CB3 district subject to special land use approval, and therefore, that's what the petitioner is seeking here tonight. Some of the adjacent land uses and zoning. Property to the north, Wilderness Park Apartments is zoned G A R, Garden Apartment Residential. Properties to the east are zoned CB3 and encompass a variety of commercial and retail uses, including Airtime and the gym over there, I'm losing the name of it, Edge. Thank you. Properties to the south are zoned CB3, general commercial business, and developed by Meyer. This is their stormwater detention pond over here to the south. And over here is the Deerhurst condo condominium facility. There were four residents that came out during the planning commission meeting from this condo association, and originally, before the meeting, well, before the information was stated on the record, they had some concerns about trees being removed and some site modifications. But later, during the meeting, they learned that there are no actual site modifications or trees or, or anything really being impacted here by this land use petition. Properties to the west are zoned CB3, general commercial, and the first business there is Famous Dave's Restaurant on the left hand of your screen. As I mentioned earlier, no modifications being proposed to the site. The existing building will sort of remain as is, with the exception of the sign out front. It's currently constructed with a brick material and some metal paneling throughout for accent materials. All of the bulk requirements and setbacks in height are in compliance with the CB3 district. Currently, there's various points of access from Warren and Central City Parkway that are shared throughout the Central City Plaza Shopping Center. The self-storage facility or warehouse is expected to generate very little traffic, and the site currently complies with the required number of off-street parking spaces for that land use. This was a point of contention with the planning commission that there be no outdoor storage proposed of any trucks, truck rentals, trailer rentals, or anything of that sort, similar to the Kmart, former Kmart turned U-Haul on Cherry Hill. And that was never proposed by the petitioner, but the planning commission decided to make it a condition of approval. The site contains existing screening and landscaping along Warren Road that is compliant with the zoning organs' requirements for landscaping. The self-storage facility will open Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I believe they did voice potential interest in opening on Sundays if business granted that opportunity. The facility expects to employ four employees onsite during business hours and will offer 24/7 access to customers and be equipped with security throughout, including CCTV cameras. No onsite personnel security. The 2018 City of Westland master plan designates this as shop and dine district. The use does provide a service and is therefore compliant with the future land use designation. And finally, the administration and planning commission, which held a public hearing, are recommending approval subject to the voluntarily proposed conditions and the no truck or trailer storage or rentals and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for those conditions. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, and the petitioners are in the audience as well. Thank you.
If you'd like to come up here. Thank you, sir. Before I turn the council loose, anything you'd like to say or add?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm David Landry, and I'm here with Mr. Daniel Borstein on behalf of the applicant this evening. As is pointed out to you, this is an application for special land use. Self-storage is a permitted use under the CB3 district, requires a special land use, which is why we're here this evening. We're proposing the adaptive reuse of a vacant big-box store, formerly of Value City Furniture. We have no intention of changing the size, the height, the building footprint, or the parking. All that will remain the same. It will look exactly the same from the outside. The proposed use, indoor climate-controlled self-storage, is actually less intense than a number of the potential uses under CB3. Hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., less than even a grocery store or some hard, large hardware stores. The traffic is less intense. The whole point of climate-controlled is that it's air-conditioned in the summer, heated in the winter, so the items that are stored are not susceptible to moisture, heat, or any freeze damage. Because of that, people store their items here for longer periods of time, hence, there's less in-and-out traffic. This is a business that's growing nationally, both large companies that don't want to pay lease space to store things and small home businesses. As home businesses are increasing, there's a need to store items. With respect to the City of Westland's special land use ordinance, there's various considerations for the council to make. One of them is that traffic will be less than other principal permitted uses. Here, there's no change at all in the traffic. The use will minimize impact on surrounding properties regarding screenage. Location of outdoor storage, there is none. There will be no outdoor storage. One of the concerns of the planning commission was, are you going to like be a U-Haul franchise or not? There's going to be no trucks parked outside, none of that stuff. No vehicle circulation change, no bulk placement change in the building, no lighting, no drainage changes, no landscape changes. There were some several members of the community that, from the sort of kitty-corner condominium association, that somehow thought we were going to remove all those trees. We're not removing any trees, zero. The landscape meets the city ordinance. We're not changing all of that. So the, it is actually consistent with the master plan, as was reported to you. The applicant is investing $13 million in your community to acquire the property and to develop it. And we're here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay. Very quick, yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. No questions for you, no, thank you. Did a fantastic job. Familiar with the storage industry, my family actually dabbles in it on the west side of the country. You know, the segment is growing. It's a, it's a high to me, a high demand for storage. I'm happy that we are repurposing a big-box store and not constructing something new. I would have heartburn with constructing something new, but I have zero heartburn with repurposing a big-box store, which struggles right now. So I'll be in support, and I also wanted to say, I want to thank the planning commission for taking the extra step and calling out the outdoor storage and keeping that out, and also memorializing that and putting that in writing so that it has some perpetuity, so the council can remember that in the future should some things change. So thank you to the planning commission for memorializing that, and thank you for moving it forward. I'll be in support. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Any questions from the supporter? Okay. Any other questions from the council? Yes. Councilwoman Baumann.
So I got, so a couple of questions, just for clarification. You are taking part of the currently, I mean, not, not, Airtime is not in the building, but part of the building that Airtime uses, you're going to be taking, I'm seeing, I'm seeing both. Are you taking the old Value City?
Airtime's still in the building, I believe. So that, that, it's a kind of a weird building. It's a V-shaped, as you can see it, and the red outline is the vacant part. That's what we're taking over. It's going to be a lot split, hopefully. And, and so we will, they'll be split off that separate building, so the entire building will be occupied.
Okay. What, my question would be, what are the sizes of the, of each of the unions? And is there going to be more than one floor?
Yes, and I'm happy to ask Mr. Borstein, who knows more the technical aspects of the, of the storage business. But yes, it, it, to answer your question, there'll be, the first floor will all be occupied. The second floor, actually, there's been a slight change. Because of the second floor, the rear of that part of the building to the right, you see, slopes down. So this floor-level plan shows nothing on the left part of the building. Actually, that part in the rear of the right building is going to be moved to the second floor. So there will be, uh, on the first floor will be occupied, the entire, and on the second floor, only half of that left part. But does not require any change in the exterior to the building.
Okay. And what's the smallest rental space and the largest one?
Uh, storage is, is fairly, uh, how do I put this? It's fairly typical throughout that the smallest spaces, particularly when you're, you're taking a rectangular box, the smallest spaces tend to be five by five feet, five feet by five feet in, in floor area. Height can, typically is about nine feet for, for the height. And the largest spaces planned, as I've seen in the floor plan, is I believe a 10 by 25 space, a 10 feet by 25 feet deep.
And I just have one more question. I'm not sure who this really goes to, but is, is this, is this part of the Tifa district? Or no?
Garza.
Yeah, Council President, thank you. This, this is part of the Tifa district, yes.
So, did, and I, and did I miss? I don't see anything about them on this application, that they don't need to...
Council, the Tifa would not have jurisdiction over this.
Okay. And I just have one last question.
Yes, go ahead, Council.
The last question I think I have is, on one of the pages, it talks about $100,000 payment to the city. What, what is, I'm not sure who, again, who this gets through the chair. I don't know who answered that. What is that for?
Under Michigan Constitution and statutory law, when an applicant comes to a municipality for a zoning change or a special land use or things of this nature, one of the concerns of every community, first concern is, well, is it going to increase public service requirements? Are we going to require more fire? Are we going to require more police? How about the environment? What about the roads? What about neighboring? What about buffering? So applicants may offer a community benefit. The community can't demand it. And on the record, I stated clear, the planning commission, this was not demanded by the city. This was offered by the applicant, okay? And it's an offer to defray the costs of extra community infrastructure and things of that nature. That, that is something that we worked with the city attorney. There has been a community benefit agreement drafted. City attorney was all very active in the drafting and approving of that, so something that we've done on the record in public as an offer by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. This is one of those instances where I, you know, I, I'm so pleased that we have a, a planning commission because it's certainly one of those items that some people kind of, you know, have to pinch their nose and swallow. They don't, they hear storage, and they, they have an idea of what that looks like. But I especially want to, again, thank our planning board for doing their due diligence. I think that's very important. So, yes, if it's within our master plan, so I will, you know, obviously be in support of it. To piggyback on what Councilwoman Baumann said, with the community benefit dollars, was there discussion with you or with the administration about how they plan on using those dollars?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
If I may, again, building on the point that it's not something the city can ask for. It's something that is offered. There was no discussion about how that will be utilized in, because it's not their... We're, we're not negotiating quid pro quo here, so, no, not at, not at this point. And, and if tonight, the council says no, then that community benefit agreement does not get paid.
Wonderful. Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Fosso. You know, we've had previous instances where a community benefit has been presented, and the administration has relayed to us how they would hope to use it, and then also the attorneys would give us a, an opinion on how it should be used. I was just curious, really, that was all. But again, it conforms with our master plan. It serves a service. It looks like it's going to be a great use of the space. It's very difficult to get these large spaces filled. So thank you again for answering any questions and being present and investing in Westland.
Okay. Pro Tem?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I did watch the planning commission. They asked a lot of good questions. Although this isn't sexy and what I would love to see in there, to be completely honest with you, I would love to see more of entertainment. This is far from that. I guess it could be entertaining, right? If you go in there, pull stuff out. I think that the only concern that I may have, and I don't know if you can address it, is individuals going in, perhaps all hours of the night. I don't know if there's separate entrances for people to come in. Are you intersecting with other people? Have you had any other security concerns of people going in? I know you said it's two floors, so I just anticipate, say it's a woman going in by herself at 2:00 in the morning because she gets off work. I, I mean, do you have any security concerns? Will the police need to be called, or are there alarm systems? So I'm just a little leery on, on this. Maybe you can clarify.
I appreciate your question, and particularly the way that you phrased it, because one of the aspects of planning these and the evolution of this gentleman, Mr. Hart, had talked about being involved in storage, is improving the security as well as the aesthetics of the property. And there is a benchmark, which we look at, which is, is a young, single woman going to feel comfortable coming into this place? And are they going to feel comfortable coming and going from this place? Exactly to your point. The nature of the higher-level quality storage facilities, which this will be, puts in several systems of closed-circuit TV as well as code systems for flagging those who are valid customers to be there, as well as having video evidence of those who come and go. There are alarms that are put throughout, alarms on all of the exterior doors in case there's any breach of anyone coming in, and those are then wired into the appropriate systems. So typically, there are circumstances in older-type storage facilities where people can jump over fences, break into doors very easily. That's one of the attractive features of doing these higher-level types of projects. The access can be contained, and electronics have allowed us now to further contain them, requiring people to put in codes and being able to identify them both visually as well as by computer code right away. So you have to put in a code, you have to be valid in order to get in because of the nature of this property as opposed to one of those outdoor-type storages. Anyone who may have used one before. There is something called tailgating. Outdoor storage, you put in maybe a similar kind of code to get into a gate. Gate slides back slowly, lets somebody go in. Plenty of time for somebody to shoot the gap right going in. These kinds of facilities, there are smaller doorways they have to go into, so only an individual is going in. So there's not tailgating of people coming in. So it becomes a safer scenario. There's, the individual is in and out of, of smaller doors. So I hope that alleviates some of the concern.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That does address that concern. And is this going to be ADA compliant? So individuals with wheelchairs or assisted devices? I, I guess I was curious, like, an aisle size, if they could come in and access as well, too?
The answer is yes. Yes, will be.
Okay, perfect. My last question is, you stated that you will have alarm systems. There's going to be a second floor, as you stated. There's going to be a second floor, as you stated. So I'm assuming it's going to be equipped on both floors? Both the second floor and the top floor, like your alarm systems?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, well, again, it is contingent with our master plan. I'm not saying that I'm not excited about it, but you can see in my face, like, hmm. But I appreciate, nonetheless, I appreciate the investment, so I will be in support of this. I would love to see entertainment, like an entertainment district, but obviously, we understand that you guys found use in this, and, you know, I do appreciate the investment. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion from the council?
Thank you for your questions. It sparked my focus. Thank you. We love DT here. What happens if power goes out? How do I get in or out of your building? Or how do I get security?
Yeah, that's right. I was going to say something. It's no different than any other business. There would be a circumstance in which electric doors would not open, but there are emergency doors, and it has to pass through your codes in order to have emergency doors. It's no different than being in any other retail business. If the power went out, the lights went out, there would be the ability to exit out of, safely out of the building. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to gain access if you have electric doors coming in.
So, power goes out, I can only get out, I can't get in? And you lose DT, you lose power, no generators or anything? Is that what you're seeing?
I'm sorry, say that again.
No generators for this, on the site?
It's not my understanding that there's a generator plan for this.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Pro Tim, do you have one more?
Thank you. So I was just speaking with the council president. This is not really related to you, gentlemen. Through the chair to the city attorney, can the community benefit be at the discretion of the city council?
It'll be a discussion between administration, I'm sure, and the city council.
Okay, so, is that a no?
Maybe I didn't understand the question. Do you, did you ask, is this a decision that will only be made by city council? Is that what you asked?
So, my question would be, will the city council have any insight on what the community benefit is used for?
I suspect that the administration will discuss it with council leadership, and to the extent it requires contracts to spend that money, it comes back to city council to make those contract decisions.
Okay. Through the chair to the mayor, do you guys have commitments already for the community benefit? Not yet?
No.
Okay, okay. Perfect, thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Baumann.
Oh, excellent. And I don't know, only because this is more curiosity, what are the rates going to be in your, in the facility? I guess I'm thinking about, like, who the audience is, and I know, I don't want to go over into your marketing plan or anything like that, but I just, I guess, I'm just thinking about, like, who's going to be using this?
I can't speak to rates, because that's the kind of thing that'll get said after the property is open and developed, and those things do, rates do change over time. So I can't, I'm sorry, I cannot speak to rates. As far as those that use it, there's a wide panorama of people that use storage. And to go to some of the earlier comments, while I understand this is not entertainment and sexy, there is an aspect of storage that is, that is actually positive and beneficial in the community, in that when you have a higher-quality facility like this, what it's doing is spreading out and allowing people who, for example, over the last few years, perhaps many people either in the audience or on the board, would recognize there's been a difficulty in buying homes and the value of, be able to purchase a home and step up into a home. Well, self-storage allows for that addition of space for people who have an instantaneous need. You have a new child, you have a parent that you bring into your home, and you have to change your utilization of space in your house, but you don't have the ability to change the space so quickly. You may be in financial circumstances outside of everyone's control, interest rates have gone up, difficult to make a move, but you have to make moves in terms of your space. During COVID, certainly, there was a change of space. Many people were clearing out bedrooms and utilizing their space for work at home, and they needed a place to store it. The thing about having a facility like this, it gives the confidence of people in the community that they can safely store their things. No disrespect to other storage facilities, I've almost exclusively worked in this context of indoor facilities like this, but things go in and come out pretty much as they were. Outside places, not always the case. And so what this does, this service allows for a community to expand and contract their space without having the pressure of feeling that they have to move. And the ability, for example, if you're in an apartment, you're seeking a home, and there isn't a home available, and you want to desperately stay in the nice community of Westland, it gives you the time to be able to wait until the home is ready without having to expend a lot of money when you need that extra space. As I said, COVID was obvious, people working from home, there have been many people who have been utilizing storage. One of the reasons why the business is growing across the country, because there's so many people who are now working from home. And working from home mandates moving things around. This is a way of not having to buy, get a new office or get a new home, but have that space that you need. So there is a real benefit to it.
I'll say. I just had a two-part question for you. So one is, when do you plan on starting construction? And then, once that construction is started, how long from time of starting it do you plan to be open?
I typically, I think he has some. My understanding, sir, is that the timeline is we would like to close on the property, assuming we get, if we get the special land use permit in September, October, submit the construction drawings, hopefully obtain permits, completion seven months from then.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's all I had. Is there any additional discussion from the council?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Good luck. Thank you for your investment.
Thank you so much.
New business, item number four, confirmation of reappointment of Brian Hopkins to the Westland Planning Commission for a three-year term, effective upon council confirmation, and to expire September 17th, 2027.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Any discussion from the council? Does the administration have anything they wanted to add? Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yeah, Brian's been on the planning commission now for several months, been doing a great job, and expressed a desire to continue serving on the commission, so we hope council confirms his reappointment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Will you stand and be recognized? Congratulations and thank you for your service, continued service, the community. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or any other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up, or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Public comment, is there anyone on my left? Yes, the same.
Good evening. How's everybody today? Okay, so I come, I have some good news. So I've been working really closely with Ms. Adelina Ramos, and she is having her ribbon cutting over at the Kids Purpose Learning Center, and that's going to be September the 6th at 11:00 a.m. And I was able to get, the Congressman Rashida Tlaib is going to be there, Senator Dana Paheki, we got our state representative, Peter Hertzberg, and I contacted Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist, and he wanted to come, he's going to come down, but at the last minute, the schedule had changed, so he's going to send, like, some words out for her daycare. But I'm super excited to help promote this local business, because she's doing some outside-of-the-box things. She's helping families with low income. She helps them with diapers, clothes, food, services, and she's actually opening another location out in Detroit. So I definitely would like to support this nice young lady who's been in the business world for Westland, to help the family. She has 24-hour services, she's doing the Great Start Ready program, and that was money that we got allocated from Governor Gretchen for our four-year-old. So I definitely would like the whole council, you know, to come and support this local business, and I just wanted to thank everyone for that. And actually, I'm the president of the Greater Area Westland Coalition, so we got that started up again. So we'll be having our meetings on the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month at the Westland Library. And I'd like to thank all the kids starting school, and football games are starting up again, and I actually sit on the Wayne County Women's Commission as well. So if there's anything you guys need on that level, definitely let me know, because I sit on the housing committee, I sit on education, skilled trades and workforce development. Good evening.
Thank you. Public comment, is there anyone on my, yes, Ryan?
Good evening. My name is Ryan. I'm the president of the Westland Historical Society. Just wanted to come tonight and give a couple announcements. First, the, the Westland Historic Village is open every Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, except for holidays. I watched the last council meeting, and I noticed Ruth mentioned a bunch of ways you could help out at the village, volunteering. We always need help with cleaning, gardening, filing. If you want to be a docent to, you know, give a tour, help with research. The main reason why I wanted to come tonight was to announce a couple of events that are coming up. On September 28th at 1:00 p.m. at the Village, we have a lecture called "All About Eloise, the Asylum and the Museum." This is presented by Jeff Kozowski, former commissioner. And our next event after that is, on October 5th, is our fifth annual haunted yard sale at the Perrinville School on Warren. This event actually goes from 10:00 till 6:00. Vendors, if there's anybody still looking to join, they are asked to come at 9:00 a.m. And the vendors usually sell handmade items, Halloween, fall decoration. If you don't know where the Perrinville School is, it's on Warren, just west of Merriman, you know, everybody's favorite location. And if you want to join the Historical Society, we have several levels of membership, individual, family, business, and we also have a donor wall. If you're interested, please contact us through Facebook or our website. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Public comment, anyone on my left?
Good evening. My name is Linda Filzetti, and I am here to ask, as a community member, but to also ask you guys, as our leaders, what are we doing about the homelessness in our community right now? I had a personal experience, as we all probably have. Last Tuesday, when it was 93 degrees out, I came across a young gentleman who was probably about my age laying on the sidewalk. I sat in the car, I watched 10 people walk by him. I went in to talk to the store manager and asked him, what do you intend to do about the gentleman laying on the ground in 93-degree weather? I'm asking you guys, as our leaders, what is our call to action? What is our plan to deal with these situations? The gentleman in the store, the manager, said nothing gets done. He's not even willing to call anymore from the store, because police officers come and they leave. I experienced this personally, myself. I called from my cell phone. I stayed on the line from my cell phone and was told to leave, while I watched the police officer just ask the gentleman if he's okay. Would you be okay with your son, your sister, your brothers, your aunts, your uncles, or anybody as a human being laying in 93-degree weather? What are we doing about this? What is our plan? What is our call to action? How do we deal with this situation? And why are police officers okay with asking, are you okay, and leaving? It's not acceptable. And I will leave you guys to answer that, because I don't know what to do with it.
And ma'am, if you can stay afterwards, we'd like to talk to you. I know there's probably a couple of us here that would definitely like to talk to you and get some answer on what we can do and, you know, moving forward here. So if you'd like to stay afterwards, I know a couple of us are probably going to want to stay and talk to you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Yes, Don.
As you know, I, Don Nicholson, don't usually come up to council to talk at the end of the meetings, but usually once or twice a year. I'm very happy to say that our 14th Cruisin' Hines just happened, August 25th, and we now have the largest classic car cruise in the country is in Westland, Michigan. This has blown away the numbers of the Woodward Green Cruise by classic car count. Woodward does count all of the vehicles that come on the road that day, not just the classics. They add in the minivans, the pickup trucks, the daily drivers and everything else. So we don't, we only allow the classics. And actually, I know Councilman Hart was there and couldn't even get out of the car cruise with his classic car that day. But we were really happy to have brought this to the community, and it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger every year. I'd like to thank the Westland Police Department, because they had a few motor patrol out there to help us out that day, and it was very nice to see them. And the guys, between the Westland Police and Wayne County Sheriff's was our, is our security for the day. So it was a wonderful event. We've done a lot of different things. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is, if you live in the area, or you've been in the area during this event, and you see an issue that we can deal with, I need to know. Because the only way we can fix the problems is if we know about them. We started out 14 years ago, as I said, using Ann Arbor Trail as the entrance, and what a disaster that was the first two years. Second year, we had 14 accidents at the entrance. We have not had an accident in the last 10 years, which I'm very happy to say. We've had very little issues with any of the problems or anything in the park. They're dealt with. You know, one of the rules that we have is no burnouts, no different things that are allowed at different non-organized events like this. And I think that helps a lot, and the community really has shown the support by coming out and picnicking that day and setting up a barbecue. We had 40 food vendors this year, so there was a good variety of food of any kind that you wanted to get. And I know Councilman, President Council McDermott and I did a nice video in the middle of the street. We sort of, it's been a tradition of mine to baptize any council member that shows up for the video, that we get to do the interview in the middle of the road with cars going both directions from us. So we've done that for the last 14 years, and good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Dale. Yep, all you.
Good evening, everyone. Ruth Dale. To start, I'd like to thank Jim Godbell for getting back to me regarding the Historical Commission budget. Thank you, Jim. On another note, I want to speak about volunteerism in our city. An excellent example of volunteerism was Jim Franklin. I learned recently that Jim passed away around four months ago. My connections with Jim was at the museum complex on Wayne Road. Jim was president of the Friends of the Westland Historical Museum for around 15 years, until it disbanded. Ryan mentioned a lot of this, and I'm going to repeat, for around, what does volunteering over there entail? Again, groundwork, moving items. As president, he was conducting a lot of meetings. He worked on every fundraiser. He did repairing, assisting a historical commissioner once a month for an open house, just to name a few. After the Friends disbanded, he joined the Historical Commission for a few years. Another important part of Jim's life was Boy Scouts of America. Oh, man, he was heavily involved with scouting for many years. Thank you, Jim. And I still have a minute here. Ryan mentioned in a September lecture, I don't know where it's to be held, I didn't catch that, it's with Jeff Kozowski, and he gives an excellent, if you have not heard him, excellent lecture on Eloise. Don't miss that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. My name's Mary Robinson, and I've been here maybe two or three times talking about issues about Tatum Park. And I wanted to update you that this has been about four or five years in the making, but finally, we've been working with the deputy mayor. Mayor Coleman appointed him, James Godbout, and with Kyle and Parks and Recs, and also with the police chief, with the combination of all of them working together and all the officers that have been helping out patrolling the park in the evening and just in the mornings. And they're just checking out the park more, and I hear other parks also. So that's been helping out. They painted the curbs on Carlson red, if anyone's noticed, adding signs on both sides of Carlson for no parking, for all those that, this is things that are covering safety issues because we had people parking there and unloading and loading and could cause accidents. And also, a big issue was, we wanted a fence, but we were given a row of bushes, which will, I never thought of that issue, but I think it will grow in, once it grows in, it'll suffice the same as a fence and maybe look nicer. Right now, it's still, we, actually with parking, it's fixed the issue probably 75, 80% less people parking, and I've only seen a couple kids in the street running after balls or something. They also added a patrolling officer on the weekends from 3:00 to 7:00. And so I just want to thank them for all that because it really means a lot, mainly the safety issues. We have a couple more issues that I want to try to touch on is patrolling the park after hours. I really hate having to call, and I just hope that maybe when the cars go in and out, if they notice cars there, they can check out. I know a lot of kids go in there without cars. Managing the teens that work there, we need help in that area. And I also just wondered if anyone knows anything about electric bike or electric scooter rules? I don't think we have any, and I think that's something that's seeming like you might want to bring up. That is all.
Thank you, ma'am.
With a minute, second.
Anyone else on my left? Ray, I knew we were going to get to you.
You got to save the best for last.
Yes, best for last. That's right. Ray, it's all you.
A lot of, you know, positives, good things have been happening here, and a month of August have been a really busy month for me. Anyway, I had like two birthday parties. So one's with my working friends, and one with the DQ, Westland PD, and the fire department. And I got my fire truck ride, and I'm telling you, I really enjoyed my day. Had a meeting with the mayor for the month, and well, we, when I am doing a new project now, and I just got done talking easy about it, so it's going to be like lunch and learn conversations, people with abilities, like a panel that I'm working on, putting it together. Because people need to hear our stories. How did we get where we are today? And I think that's a really good way of saying it because we didn't have the diversity. We didn't have the inclusion. So I am proud about what I am, I'm trying to hear my story and what I am doing today. I'm also, a matter of fact, a DD council member there. And then that's things I want to show, the mayor's wearing one, and Melissa's got one, and Greg's got one. VIP people are getting a button from me because years I've been fighting this. Label cans, we do not label people. Because I tell people, how would you feel if someone labeled you? I don't like that. So I know three minutes go pretty fast here, so I want to get to the, and training the fire department, brand-new people. This is great. I trained these four of them, two had to go on a run. And they says, Ray, I love the way you do your PowerPoint. I love the way to hear your story and how to work with people better. And I am really happy about that. I even trained the Westland Police Department this year, too, and good things are happening for me in 2024. It's like, I just wanted to share about this panel, so we are putting it together even with the mayor, and I'm definitely looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name's Ted Lucas. I've been living in Westland since 1959, and we purchased a house back in 1959 for $15,995. And it's been a great place to live. It was an anchor township when I moved here. And my issue is with the library, with our hotspots. Now, when I first started getting the hotspots, because a lot of elderly people cannot afford their hotspots, they're very high for getting your Wi-Fi to your house. So they first started with one week, and I talked to them, I says, "Why don't you take and move it to two weeks? Because one week you have to come back, and another week come back, especially for the elderly." And what happens is now, they got it to two weeks. Now, when I went in a couple, three weeks ago, they have a problem with bedbugs. Now, the bedbugs, they take and put them to some kind of process they have, but when you bring your hotspot in, you have to take and leave it there and come back the next day, and if they have one, they'll give you another one. It's not for me. I'm 92-years-old. Okay, so it's, I'm not the handicapped person, but the other people that have handicapped that have to walk with a cane and drive there and come back, that's what I'm talking about. The people that can't get there, and I feel sorry for the people that have to walk with a cane and get around. And that's my issue right now, so I don't know if we can do anything about it. I would suggest at least for three weeks, one, you could have one. But when you go back there and they say, "We don't have one," then you come back the next day. So elderly people like that, three times they have to come back, and I don't think it's fair. So that's my issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I just want to confirm real quick. I just want to confirm, I shouldn't refer to the library. Are you referring to the library?
Yes, the Westland Library.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I watch them build it, so I know. I watch a lot of things being built around here.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council, everybody in attendance tonight. I hope everybody had a nice Labor Day weekend. Appreciate everybody in the audience that's here. First of all, I want to wish all the students, teachers, parents, bus drivers, administration, school staff, I want to wish everybody good luck in the upcoming school year that just started. And I want to ask our drivers to please use extra caution, especially in school zones or where bus stops are, are just, you know, just be extra careful out there, please. We had a heck of a storm last week, knocked out power to a few thousand residents in our city. I know DTE, we were in communication with them quite a bit about the traffic signals in certain neighborhoods. We saw them get their crews out pretty fast, and the linemen were working pretty quick, so we were happy they got the power on pretty, pretty quick this time. I want to ask residents, please put your branches and brush at the curb because our DPS crews are going to be sweeping through the city this week. They started this morning. We put that out on our social media, but I want to make sure everybody knows that we're doing another sweep through the neighborhoods to get the brush cleared up. So if you have any of that in your yard, just put it up by the road, and it should get picked up this week. I want to congratulate Brian Hopkins on your reappointment to the planning commission. I know you're a resident and a small business owner here in the city. We appreciate you continuing to serve, so thank you for that. We've had some great events over the last couple of weeks. I wanted to thank everybody that attended Cruising Hines. Congratulations, Don. It sounds like it's going great. Sorry I wasn't able to be there this year, but I'll try to come on down next year, so great job. We had our Women of Westland Ball. I was able to recognize former mayor, current judge Sandy Cicirelli, Reece Reaster Everett posthumously, and others were recognized as well, and I thought it was a really nice event. And then we dedicated our media studios here to the late Craig Wakenbach, and I thought it was a really beautiful dedication, and I want to thank the former mayors and elected officials and all the residents that were in attendance and actually former city staff that was there as well. It was really nice to see the community come together in honor of Craig, so I appreciated that very much. And we have a few events coming up. Tomorrow night at the Westland Friendship Center, they're going to start a little concert series that they're doing in the park behind the Friendship Center that's on Newburgh Road. So that's tomorrow, September 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. There'll be music there, it's open to all residents. There's going to be, our Parks and Recreation is doing the Grandparents and Me Day, which will be right here at City Hall on September 7th. It's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There'll be games, lunch, and art projects. Also on the 7th, which is Saturday, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, will be the Craft Beer and Wine Festival at Central City Park. I know that that's a popular event. There'll be over 150 craft beers and wines, live music, food trucks, games, cornhole and much more. The Westland Electronics Recycling Drop-Off Day will be Saturday, the 14th, September 14th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the recycling center on Marquette Road. I want to congratulate Entepoli Baklava on their grand opening. It's in the former Panera building right by Westland Mall. Really nice spot, great coffee, great desserts. I'm going to give them a plug because I was just really impressed with their food and drinks there, so I thought it was really nice. It's nice to see some of our vacant buildings get filled up. I want to thank the City Council for your support of a new business in the city tonight that's exciting to see. And we have a groundbreaking ceremony, and we talked about groundbreakings earlier, but this groundbreaking is finally coming up for our fire station number two, which is at Warren and Merriman Road in the former Hawthorne Valley site. It's going to be Thursday, September 26th at 11:00 AM. This is open to the public, and of course, all city officials, we'd love to have you there as well. Definitely an important and historic day for the city. And then my State of the City address will be on Tuesday, September 17th, at the Soho Banquet and Event Center. Doors open at 3:00 PM with the event beginning at 3:30. There's a Chamber of Commerce Business Awards Ceremony part of the event, and then also, that's followed by my State of the City address at 4:00, and then there'll be a small reception there at 5:00. We ask for advanced registration because of the venue. We're kind of making sure we're counting heads and have enough people there. There are free tickets available to residents, but please call our office or register online at lavoniawestland.org. And I just want to end it on, bless you, Ray. I want to end it on a note of label cans, not people. Thank you, Ray, for the button. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the city attorney's office?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to plug one event. On September 18th, the 15th Annual Veterans Summit will return here to Westland City Hall from 11:30 to 1:00. This is presented by Local Impact Alliance, which the Westland Community Foundation is a part of, and actually, Mr. Godbout sits on that board. Also presented by Legal Help for Veterans. There'll be a veteran advocate, some retired brigadier general will be there, and some lawyer will be there to be able to provide information on caregivers' benefits, survivor benefits, and PACT Act. A box lunch will be supplied as well, and the sponsors for that are Jack Demmer Ford and Jacob Matthew Jewelers. So you can register if you're a veteran or friends of veteran, family members, and you need to know more about your veteran benefits by calling Beth at 734-495-1200, or call Mr. Godbout, he'll get you registered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. Don Nicholson, thank you. Good job with the Cruising Hines. So I took my 41-year-old car to Cruising Hines, and it was a good time. Right before that, I did take my 15-year-old car over to the Dream Cruise. It was a nightmare, you know, the Dream Cruise. It was dangerous, a lot of guys doing the kind of things that we don't like seeing at the Hines Drive Cruise, and the way you have it organized prevents that from happening. Guys with old, people with older cars tend to take care of their cars and care about how they behave. Amazing show, amazing program. Thank you so much. Good job, Don. The second thing I wanted to tell you was, good job with this. You know, try to find the words to say that, you know, sometimes God picks the parent. And you did a damn fine job because you're still being probably the best parent, and you're teaching all of us something at the same time. So thank you so much, Don, and God rest Edward. Thank you. That's all for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowlin.
I also will be brief. I just, it's, there's been so much going on in the city that it's kind of overwhelming, so I'm not going to repeat some of the things. I think there's a lot of thank-yous, and there's a lot of things to do this month. I do want to mention that, you know, when a lot of kids are back at school, obviously we're going to, you know, it's that caution time with walking and things like that, just being aware of the kids being out, going to school. So I think that's a big day, and I just, I, obviously, being a parent of children, I emphasize that all parents who are now with their kids back to school, because there's a certain amount of stress that, getting that back there, so just reminding all that, just to kind of take a breather, sometimes we have to do that. And I am going to just say to the person that decided to take a left turn on a red light in front of me today at Newburgh and Joy, if you're, if you happen to be listening to this, please slow down. We don't need to start our days off like that. So I'm very blessed that I did not get hit, but yeah, don't do that. Don't go through red lights. Please just take the extra 30 seconds it takes to wait for the cycle to come around again. I've counted, 30 to 45 seconds is all it takes in most lights to come around back to a green. It's not worth it. So, someone who's been in accident, I'm like just going to say that. And then I do, I think there's a tea this Saturday as well at the Jefferson Barn Center, Rosie Tea. So I think there's still tickets available?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to plug that because I didn't hear that. So I do want, I don't know where the best place to send you to do that, but it's Rosie Tea, and we've got people, if anyone's interested, just do a search, I guess, on Facebook for the event for September 7th. So thank you, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. First, I want to start off with, you know, due to the storms, I want to thank the fire department, the police department for everything you guys did to make sure traffic flew safely. And I think we had a power line hit a car. I'm not sure if you guys, the fire department was involved with that one, but we did have electric line around the corner from my house that caught on fire, and that was definitely terrible. But I also want to give a plug for DPS, man, like the mayor said, put your brush on the side of rope, and they were there this morning picking up mines, and I was definitely impressed. I didn't think they were going to come this soon and clean it up. So I do want to give them a shout out for their hard work, and not only did they pick up the brush, but they did clean up around the area as well, so you don't have tree limbs just laying around from what they picked up, the big ones. So I want to give them a shout out for that. Melissa, thank you for this. Don, thank you for this. Everyone that helped with this, this is really awesome. I do have one request. Can I have another one? This is really awesome. I like it. Even this can be just used for myself if I just want to say anything to you, just, hey, yes, without speaking. So this is really great. I like what you did here. I really appreciate that and all the hard work that went to this. Last thing I have on my list is, today is my daughter's birthday. I have two little girls. One's birthday is today, and one is the 10th. Instead of being at their birthday party today, they said, "Okay, if I come here, only if I did one thing, tell them happy birthday so they can watch it tomorrow over and over and over again." So hang on a second.
He can all say it.
Yeah. So. So I just want to tell Laney, happy birthday, and Riley, and Daddy is very proud of you and love you. So if everyone could just say happy birthday to Laney and Riley for me, they would love that forever. One, two, three. Happy birthday! Thank you. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you, Councilmen. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you. We're surrounded by good fathers today. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off, you know, just part of the Mockingbird crowd here, but, you know, being an educator, I can't tell you how many times something like this has been needed in a classroom, and I know Mrs. Hunt knows that as well. in a classroom, and I know Mrs. Hunt knows that as well. And it's not just a tool that can be used by someone who's nonverbal, because sometimes we have nonverbal moments, right? So it's much easier when you're in a state of panic to be able to point to what you might need. So, this is just fantastic, and what a blessing for Westland to have this, and I couldn't help but get a little bit reclamped. And I'm going to try to keep it together. I'm sorry. I miss our buddy. I really do. What a great tribute. What a great tribute. Don, you're an exceptional human being. Planning Commissioner Hopkins, thank you for your committed, continued commitment to the city of Westland. You know, I'm a J.C. Well, I'm an exhausted rooster at this point.
Welcome.
When you hit over the age of 40, you're not allowed to be a J.C. anymore. But at any rate, we have a saying, and a service to humanity is the best work of life. I truly believe that, and I thank all of our commissioners for serving our city so The Council President had mentioned, ma'am, about the homeless population and what we're going to do. I think I'm one of those people that'd like to stick around and have a conversation. You know, just maybe three years ago, Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries opened, or at least had control over a building on Ann Arbor Trail, and they became the Regency. If anybody remembers the Regency, that's right behind Tommy's Car Wash. I drive by it daily on the way to work, and I have yet to ever see any activity there. So, you know, it'd be really interesting to see what's going on with that building, and if that's something that we can kind of steward people towards. Additionally, maybe there's something like these cards for some of the businesses in the area, too, that can kind of guide those folks to, you know, shelter, food, whatever they may need. And we also have to make sure our business owners know when we have our warming and cooling centers available. I think that would be helpful. To the gentleman who spoke about the hotspots, I think, one, you are an amazing human being for being 92. I think you walk better than me in my hip. But, you know, I certainly can understand and empathize with what you're trying to say. So hopefully, we can speak with our library board and find a more equitable way for, you know, our population to use those, especially those that have a hard time getting around. And lastly, I want to say welcome home to my mom, who decided that it was time to spend Labor Day in the hospital. She suffered another stroke incident, and she's going to be having surgery soon. So this is my call to action to the Fire Department. You once did a very excellent and award-winning production with WLND with the Stand By Your Pan, and I'm hoping that you can put something together with WLND about Be Fast. My mom is a non-symptomatic stroke survivor. She, they almost didn't transport her, but knowing that it was her second time, she knew she needed to go. But I think a lot of people need to know what those signs and symptoms are, and I think you are just the guys to do it. So with that, please take care of your family, love one another, be kind to each other. Remember that we're all just a little bit different, and try your best to make the world just a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I thank everyone for showing up today. Really appreciate it. This card I will be using. I work with a lot of people at my job for work training, and some of them are nonverbal. I didn't even consider this as an option to communicate with them. Actually, I would bring this up to my company-wide email about this, because we all do job training programs at our company, and I think this is something that just none of us even thought about, so I appreciate it. And thank you very much. That's all I got.
Okay, great. We will now hear from Pro Tem.
All right, thank you. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day. Councilwoman Rakowski, I'm so glad to hear that your mom is home, too. You know, I've been praying for her. I'm going to start by thanking, again, the committee. So my mom put a lot of time and effort into this behind the scenes with Gretchen still going back and forth and making sure that these are the universal signs. So I just, I want to thank her for her time, because she wanted to make it right. And of course, Don Nicholson, and the best tribute ever for Edward. Don's a great partner in our city to begin with, but when I had asked him, my mom actually, we were like, we need to talk with Don, maybe he'll do this. He, without hesitation, said, absolutely, I will do this, of course. So this, as kind of stated, is a tool, as all of my colleagues have mentioned, that is very instrumental for not only communication, but also confirmation of the command. So I do hope the police and fire use these. I'm going to hold on to this as well, too, when we intercount, you know, talk with individuals and, you know, tell us, point, point. But this is, this is just kind of the start of things that I would love to see in our city, and I just want to thank Don and the committee and everyone that played a part in this. And I do hope that it gets used, because, again, this is, this is something, being compassionate and allowing for nonverbal communicators to communicate with our first responders. So, again, thank you so much for, for everyone, for the kudos. It really goes to the committee, and to Don, and my mom, and Ray, and everyone that supported this. I wanted to start with wishing the kids a great school year. I know it's been mentioned. Just be careful out on the roads. I will say this over and over. My son starts his senior year, so I think last meeting I talked about, like, crying mom. But really, in all seriousness, it's really important, as is mentioned by individuals, just to be safe, take extra caution, especially in the mornings, around parks and bus stops. It's just really important just to be safe on the roads. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Hopkins on your reappointment to the Planning Commission. I do watch those meetings, and you do a great job, so I'm happy that you decided to stay aboard. As mentioned, we had a great event. I know Director Aze is gone, but he pulled together a fantastic event that really focused on women. We highlighted many different women, not only in the city, but women that, that were influential as well, too. So we, our women on the council here, we talked with a councilwoman over in Ukraine, which I thought was very impactful. So Wesleyan's doing a lot of great things, and I just wanted to thank Director Aze for putting this together. And thank you, everyone, for attending, too. It was a great, I think it was a great time. I also wanted to thank, I know the mayor left, but him and the administration on the dedication to Craig Walkenbach. Craig was a very instrumental part of WLND. He was here all the time. I know, right after his passing, I emailed the mayor and council president saying, what can council do? So I was so happy that this happened, because I cannot think of anyone more deserving that gave so many years to Wesleyan. So it was fantastic that we were able to do this. Going down my notes here, I will be at the Hats Off to Rosie event, so I'm glad to, I already got my tickets, but I'm glad to promote this. So Saturday, September 7th, ticket prices are 35. So lunch, tea, and music, and basket raffles, and hat contests. So the council, I'm not sure, I think I told Christina, but the council is going to be donating two baskets to, to the event. So thank you to the council members that participated in that. I think that was something that we wanted to do to support the event. And then lastly, I wanted to thank Officer Kelly. I did a ride-along with the Police Department over the weekend. It was 11 hours in the car, and I hung till the wee early morning hours, and I developed a new appreciation of what our police officers do. There's a lot of things, not only, and I would encourage all my council members to do this, and mayor and whoever, there's a lot of things that I did not realize that happens in our city. You know, individuals have said, oh, our cops this, our cops that. The type of stuff that they deal with is unbelievable. Everything from mental health issues, I won't go into detail, but we had a, we had a resident that we had to take to the hospital, and then we met our Fire Department there, and we had a petition, and it was, it was so complex. And the grace that they give to individuals is fantastic. So, you know, I really appreciated what was done. I think that our police officers have to be well-trained and adept in many different ways. But I walked away with no sleep, but I walked away just trying to understand and process what a police officer does on a daily basis, because I went through just a whirlwind of emotions from this side of the city to dealing with someone that had drugs, to dealing with someone that was pulled over, dealing with mental health. It was like, I was, I was bouncing back and forth with my emotions. So, you know, I just pray that they're safe on the road. Again, I have a new appreciation for what they do. I feel like, in terms of the training that is needed, we, me and one of the other police officers, we're talking about the Street Smart Cop Training as possible, maybe a host that we can host it here as Wesleyan could be, you know, a leader in our training. But I'll tell you what, I just, I applaud them so much. And for those that do not understand what they do, I would, I would implore you to see if you could also do a ride-along, because they are just phenomenal. So, that's my plug for the Police Department, and fire, you're up next. But after 11 hours, I was emotionally spent, so. I'm just going to go through, I know there was a couple comments that were mentioned. So, Don, I know you talked about the Cruising Heinz, which, again, congratulations on that. Ms. Dale, you talked about volunteerism, which I agree, I can't agree more. That's the deepest reward that I can give back and be a public servant. So thank you for bringing that up, and a pleasant reminder that, you know, we all need to kind of get back when we can. Ma'am, that talked about the homelessness, I'll stay after as well, too. I do a lot with, like, homelessness and care kits and such, so that's just all personal. And then Mr. Lucas, that talked about the library, I will also stay after and talk with you, too. I think it's a great idea, about every three weeks. I think that's a fantastic idea. And then Ray, you had talked about the panel, so I know we had talked already. I'd be happy to be your, your host, as you asked me. So I think that there's a lot going on, as mentioned, and just makes me proud to be in this position and just be here. So our next meeting will be Monday, September 16th at 7:00, and until then, be safe and kind with each other, and we will see you in two weeks.
All right, thank you, Pro Tem. First off, sir, we did public comment. If you have something, we can stay after and grab you here. Yep. But we'll stay, we'll stay after and talk to you. So first off, thank you to everybody that put this together, Don, in Edward's memory, for doing something like this, for everybody on the Disability Advocacy Committee, Ms. Hunt, Pro Tem Sampi, Ray, everybody that, you know, made this possible. This is so critically important for our police and fire, so thank you for doing this and bringing this forward and getting it done. I think this is going to be a great asset for our public safety, and really appreciate the work that went into this. So thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Don, thank you as well for Cruising Heinz. I know it's an event you've done every year. We can say it's the largest classic car, because the Dream Cruise allows pretty much everyone to drive down Woodward, so you've got the largest classic car. So thank you and everybody that you work with for putting on Cruising Heinz, keeping it a safe and fun event for all, getting rid of the burnouts and the people who want to, you know, show off in front of others and kind of ruin it. So thank you for keeping it a great event for everybody, and thank you for including me in the video this year. I appreciated being a part of that. Didn't expect to be a part of that when I was going to stop down there, so for you and WLND for making me a part of that, I really appreciate that. So thank you very much on that. I want to give a shout, give a shout out to all of our city employees. Labor Day was yesterday. So to all the men and women who, labor union or not, whether you're in the Police Officers' Association, Lieutenant's and Sergeants' Union, firefighters, Local 1279, Ask Me 1602, UAW Supervisory Union, or if you're non-union, too, thank you for all you do in the city. We owe you, that's why we owe you great pay and benefits and, you know, fair wages and some paid time off to recoup and rest as well. So thank you for all you do each and every day here in the city, keeping our city safe, making our city look great, and keeping us running and operating. To Director Aze, and to Nicole Jones, and the entire DEI team, to my colleagues who participated, Pro Tem Sampi, Councilwoman Rakowski, Councilwoman Bowman, and to the mayor's office as well, thank you for the She Rocks Women of Westland event. I had the chance to go and stay for the entirety of the event. It was really a tremendous event. It's something that I hope we can make an annual event here in the city to recognize all the dedicated, hard-working women here in the city of Westland who make our city great, those that serve on the council, those that work in our city, and just women who do extraordinary things here in the city of Westland. So thank you for everybody here on council, the administration who made it a special event, the mayor, Director Aze, and Nicole Jones as well. Really appreciated being able to attend that event. The panel that you did with the council member, the councilwoman from Ukraine, was really eye-opening, because you think we have problems. It's like, jeez, at least we can sit here in a building that isn't rubble and actually have meetings without worrying about Russian bombardment from Vladimir Putin. So thank you, again, for all the work you women ladies did on that. With regards to homelessness, Linda, thank you for bringing that up. Homelessness in the wealthiest nation on earth is a scourge upon our society, and, you know, unfortunately, we put profit ahead of people sometimes, and I believe there's so much more that we need to do when it comes to tackling homelessness. I would love to stay after and talk to you about the idea of the Public Health Department that I brought up a few times. I think having some kind of homelessness coordinator to work with under that umbrella would be, you know, something I would love to see. Ultimately, that's a long runway. I'm not going to sit here, like I did the last meeting, and spend 20 minutes going over a public health department, but I'd love to talk to you about the idea afterwards as well. So thank you for bringing that up, and I agree, it's a scourge upon society in the wealthiest nation on earth that we allow that to happen. It's very unfortunate. Just a couple of other things here. Melanie, thank you for bringing up the Quanis. I didn't realize that was back. I'd love to talk to you about that as well. I want to thank the administration for a really job well done on the dedication to former director Walkenbach. You know, Craig was someone that we all loved and cared about deeply here, not only through his work in WLND, but all of us that knew him as a friend, whether you were in fantasy football league with him, or fantasy baseball league with him, or you just saw him and Beth around town. Craig really was a gem in this community, and he really wouldn't have wanted that event for him. He would have wanted it to recognize somebody else, because that's the kind of selfless individual that Craig was. But nonetheless, you know, we felt it important to honor Craig. Thank you to my colleague for bringing up the idea with the flag, and to the mayor and the deputy mayor for really a wonderful ceremony, and everybody that you invited and included in it, the former mayors, thank you for doing that. I know that, you know, Beth and the family felt, you know, really honored and special to be a part of that and to have Craig's memory honored. And, you know, to one, one more guy that, you know, really deserves to be honored, that's Dave Monnet. Dave was a longtime member of WLND, in fact, probably longer than Craig. So while we dedicated the WLND studios to Craig, you know, let's remember Dave Monnet's legacy and all the work that he did to make WLND more than just cable access, to really make it a wholesale, community media event. And then with that, I think that's, you know, all I really have this evening. As always, if you need something, you can find me on Facebook, @CouncilmanMikeMcDermott. You can also reach out to me, call or text at (734) 890-2146. I do get busy, so sometimes it takes a few days to get back to all the messages and things that I get, but, you know, I will try to get back to you. But again, you can reach me, call or text at (734) 890-2146. And with that, is our motion to adjourn.